Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will now open the regular city council meeting for September 2nd. We will have the invocation, and the pledgian invocation will be given by Pastor Bob Ness from the United Methodist Church of Victorville. And Mr. Hunter, if you'll go ahead and lead us in the pledge.
Gracious God, we come before you to pray for our mayor and city council. We would ask that their decisions be wise, effective, and in the best interest of the total community. We ask for power and strength to give them the wisdom to make the difficult decisions. And we thank you for this form of government and this country. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Place your hand over your heart and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation, a God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Excuse me. We will be opening public comment for all the entities, the libraries, Southern California Logistics Rail, Southern California Logistics Airport, Victorville Redevelopment and Victorville Agenda, and the City of Victorville. Anybody wishing to speak and address the council, excuse me, at this time are requested to complete one of the white cards which have been placed on the agenda table in the foyer of the city chambers and give it to this board secretary for our records. Number one, public comment would be when you would want to speak. Presentation? Before we go through public comment, we will go ahead and take a, we have a presentation, thank you, by Mr. Kevin Mahaney from St. Mary's Medical Center about the hospital benefits in the community. Excuse me.
Good evening, city council members and staff. My name is Kevin Mahaney. I'm with St. Mary Medical Center. And with me tonight is Brother Gary Hill. He's the executive director for St. John of God Healthcare Services in Victorville. And tonight, both of us will just provide you with a very short presentation, 10 minutes or less, on what we're doing in the world of community benefit, which is something that a not-for-profit hospital should be doing in lieu of paying taxes. This first slide right here just starts off, just recaps basically what we've done in our fiscal year 2008, which ended June. Our total community benefits, which is what we directed toward the community, is $11,500,000 with about 101,000 persons served. You got a couple of photos with explanations on them. I think I'll start first with that young girl walking down the sidewalk. We treat about 8,000 patients a year at our hospital who cannot afford to pay their hospital bill or are uninsured. And that's equivalent to about running our emergency department one week free every month of the year. So that total comes to almost $7 million in write-off. And that's an example of doing community benefit. Although we don't put a sign on our front door that says "Free Healthcare," the reality is, is that increasingly, one out of seven people don't have health insurance, and when they get stuck with an acute need, there's a need to write it off. I'm pleased to let you know, though, that we keep growing what we're doing out in the community, that bottom picture there of those healthcare workers around that child. We spent over $1 million and keep wanting to expand what we can do through our community clinics and our mobile van. And I'm proud to tell you that we've seen a big jump in the number of people we can serve, over 30,000. And we're very pleased with the people that are coming to us in Old Town Victorville. We have our mobile van down there on a regular basis, do what we can next to St. John of Arc, and continue to go down there and provide services to children and families that might not have insurance or a medical home. To your left, there's a person in a wheelchair. And basically, what that is, is just a loss that we take providing health services when people have insurance products that don't pay us very much money. And so if you hear hospitals squealing about budget cuts and whatnot, one reason why, one reason why we do that is a program like Medi-Cal is just one where it doesn't cover a hospital or a physician on what their hard cost is for providing the service. Brother Gary is with me here tonight. He's going to explain a little bit more on the next slide about some of the services that St. John of God provides. But I just wanted to let you know that in addition to the hospital doing things themselves, like through a community health department or through discounting a hospital bill, what we increasingly want to do, is part of the reason why we're here, is develop relationships with our partners out in the community so that we can continue to do good things. And I won't read everything here, but this is just a snapshot of some of the partners we have and some of the work we're trying to do outside of our hospital in the name of community benefit. And what I'll do here is turn the mic over to Brother Gary, who will talk a little bit about St. John of God.
Thank you. Good evening. St. John of God Healthcare Services provides alcohol and drug substance abuse recovery to people of the high desert, and we're located mainly in Victorville. So our services cover on the main campus out on Palmdale Road for residential and detoxification services. And in Old Town Victorville, where we partner with St. Mary's, we have services on Sixth Street, Eighth Street, and Tenth Street. And one of the services on Eighth Street I'd like to bring to your attention is Samaritan Helping Hand. So we, through donations and through grant opportunities, are able to assist people that are the blue-collar workers today, that are the ones who are under stress and strain to pay utility bills, to buy prescriptions, to have food, to have clothing, and other necessities that might happen that they need. So St. Mary's is very generous in working with us in that project in Old Town Victorville. And they also come once a month to help with screening of children for vaccinations and things like that, to help to make sure that their health records are kept up to date, so that we work on having healthy children to grow into our future of our population.
I just want to thank the City of Victorville for the support that they've given to the homeless shelter. We certainly are seeing at the hospital and through St. John of God a real uptick in the number of families that are in crisis that can't make their ends meet with either food, or housing, or electricity and things like that. So we're going to keep running that program, and we're very happy to have St. John of God, which is in Old Town Victorville, because without their services, a lot, a lot of families would be in crisis. I think as the slide shows, they're probably caring for 400 to 600 people a month that are showing up looking for financial assistance. Where are we going? This slide right here just reports out some work we've had done in the community on health needs. Sorry, it's a bit blurry. It's childhood obesity. What this is basically showing here, that slide, and our bar is the one near in the middle that says SMMC, is that childhood obesity, or at risk of becoming obese, is something that we see, obviously nationally, but we're focusing on our market in the high desert and starting to say to ourselves, is this something we should get involved in? A lot of health systems around the country are starting to get more and more involved with childhood obesity. So this will probably be one area that with luck, I'll hope to come back and report out some good news for you on how we're doing in that. One thing that we did is we looked very carefully at how students do in meeting California physical fitness standards. And actually, there's data managed in a web base. And what we've done right here is just profile for you how each of the schools, school districts, if you will, across the high desert. And those bars would represent number of students who cannot meet the physical fitness standards laid out by the state of California. You can see it's pretty daunting. The big one is aerobic capacity. It seems that as children get older and get into high school, the aerobic capacity falls off a lot quicker than, say, the body mass. So they might not be getting obese, but their capability of running a mile, let's say, or walking a mile within a prescribed time starts to really trail off. Figuring out ways of how we can help students get more physically active, working with schools will be something we'll probably be looking at. So our next steps, as we keep fixing and working on our community benefit plan for the hospital and the community, is definitely try fighting this obesity. We're going to need partners for that. Help the uninsured. We know that 1 in 7 people don't have health insurance, and unless it gets fixed, it's very complicated to fix it, it'll get worse before it gets better. We want to inspire youth toward college, and we've been very grateful with the work we've done with Silverado High School, even have them consider healthcare, because believe it or not, the career pays well, but we don't have a lot of kids looking at healthcare as a possible career. We're also in this name of working with youth, recognize the U-turn program, and opportunities to try to keep youth in a positive way. So this area of working with youth, I think, could be one where there's a fit between what the city is wanting to do with your programs. We want, as a hospital, to expand wellness and acute care services in the high desert. How can we be out there more forcefully in wellness and prevention and not just wait until people get so sick they have to be ambulanced to the front door? And then our goal would be to grow community benefits from $11 million here in just a couple of years. I'd like to see it be at $15 million. And Brother Gary and I would be happy to answer any questions, but if not, we'll get off the stage and let you get on with your meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment that we worked together on some projects in the past, and I commend the St. Mary's for doing all this. Government can't take care of everything for a community, so, you know, the communities themselves need to step up to the plate and do some of the things that government can do.
Thank you. I agree with you.
Kevin, I would love to see your organization involved in the U-turn program. As you know, we're trying to find ways to direct children into the right path, and that includes employment and career paths. And I think yours would be an excellent opportunity for us.
Well, we definitely met, we hear you. We met with Marquita, and we kind of laid out to her some of our programs for careers, which involves having students come to our hospital, spend a half a day. And then I know Brother Gary is looking at technical skills training as also something that can be done. So I think between the two programs or organizations, there's some things there that could be a good fit. Again, I want to thank you all and have a great meeting.
Thank you. Now we will open the public comment section on all of the entities. I only have one card. And we have a three-minute time limit on all our speakers. And the first card is Ms. Peggy Sardar. Excuse me, can you pull the microphone down?
For the sake of all, for the record, I just want to say that some time ago, while Jeff Goodwill was the mayor, he asked me several times, and finally I said, okay, I would give him some pictures of my artwork, I mean, actually, the actual pictures to hang in City Hall. At that time, he was trying to put his work and mine up wherever there were blank walls. And he assured me that they would be safe. I brought in six oil paintings and a pencil drawing, and it had a first prize blue ribbon attached to it. I always put them on the back so I wouldn't remember where I lost it. And when I went to pick up my pictures, Carol Lee told me that Mr. Roberts wanted the pencil drawing in his office. I agreed with the understanding, and it was a mutual understanding, that it was a loan and not for sale. From time to time, I tried to get them back, but I didn't, because every time, some of the people where they were hanging didn't want to lose them, particularly people in the back, because they had those gray room divider walls. And when you took my pictures down, there was no window, and my pictures were designed to invite you to come on in, take a stroll through a forest, or down in the woods, or along the beach, or whatever. And I noticed when they took them off, it really seemed like the walls closed in on them. So I left a bunch of them there. I gave one oil painting to Carol Lee for a wedding present, and Marlene returned three of the paintings that were hanging in her area. But my painting of the old sheriff's office seems to be lost, as is the framed story of the city seal. It included my original pencil sketch, and then a color rendering, and then the blue and white renderings and the design for the city seal. And then I typed a story of how we got the city seal from the beginning, when Gladys Buds came to me pleading, would I please do it? Because all the designs had been submitted she didn't like. And so I worked with Milt Jones, who did the printing, and I did the artwork. We formed a company, because he didn't like to do artwork, and I didn't like to do printing, and we were being asked to do an awful lot of free artwork. And by making a company out of it, we got along and got a little richer. But anyhow, I then looked at the whole thing and framed it, because sometime in history, there'll need an historic record, and there's probably nobody left who knows how it happened besides me. Most of you were all too young. I asked the city's office staff to return it to me in case the time came when it wasn't wanted, any of them. And if my pictures have been lost in the archives, it would be nice to have them brought to light somehow. And before you dismiss my plea for help, just think how you would feel if a trusted friend took your children on a two-week trip to Yosemite, and only half of them came back. What would you do? Thank you. I would appreciate any help, because time is passing, and I'd certainly like to get them back. I've been postponing a retrospective art exhibit of my work just to get them back, because some of those were ones that I particularly cared about, and I can't go any further than to get them back. They can't have died. They aren't buried, maybe, but somebody knows where they are. Somebody took them, or they were hidden, or they have to be somewhere. I don't think they were just thrown out. So I'd appreciate any help you could give me. Do you have any questions?
Former Councilwoman Sardar, we will put on a full-blown search for all of your drawings. Your comment about Carol Lee Bates saying that your hand drawing was hung on my wall, I've never had a conversation like that with Carol Lee Bates. I've never seen your hand-drawn picture, but if we do find it, I'd be honored to hang it in my office.
Carol Lee, do you remember it?
I don't specifically remember it. I remember we had a conversation about how it was located in the former city manager's office for many years.
Oh, no, it wasn't. It was hanging on your wall, and I went in, and I was going to take them all home, because I'd been there a long time. And that one was on the west wall, and I had another one, which I gave you, the orange for City of Chaffola.
I remember that one.
But I went over, and we took it off the wall. And then you mentioned that Mr. Roberts had said he would like to have that in his office. And I was pleased that somebody would like to have it, so I said, fine. But that's where I last saw it, was in her office. And I know for sure that's where it was, because I have a very vivid memory of it. And I made a record of those things. So if it didn't get to your office, then I'm really concerned. I'll have to call out search and rescue after all.
Well, we will look for it. It never did make my office. I'm sorry you didn't come into my previous office. Actually, I had six paintings that my mother had painted, oil paintings of Catalina Island. And those are the only pictures that I had on my wall in my office.
It was a pencil drawing of desert foliage. It wasn't a picture, it was a pencil drawing. And it had, I think it was signed peg, because I usually sign the pencil work peg.
We will put out a full-blown search for all of your paintings and drawings.
But I never got into your office after you took over the office. The two times I had an appointment with you, I met in that little place with the white plastic cubby holes, the white chairs and tables. So I really was disappointed, because I thought that when I met with you, I would have a chance to see how it looked there. And I didn't get that chance. But that's where I last saw it, and I remember distinctly saying that since it was you, when you had just been made city manager, I would be glad to let you have it for a while.
I would love to have it in my office. I hope we can find it.
I'd like to have it.
Plance a bath, Mr. Roberts. I think we should make a full-blown investigation on all Ms. Sardar's paintings, and then give her a call and let them know where they are and who has them, and then she can come get them.
Well, lest you think the staff hasn't been helping me. They have. Carol Lee has looked and looked, I don't know how many times through the years. Yvonne Hester took down the whole list of what was missing and where I last saw it. John Gargan has made a search. But even with all of that, they are hidden somewhere. I hope they're not under a pile of trash that gets wet. That's about the only thing that would destroy them, because they were mostly oils, and the framed picture has glass over it. But those girls know what it is, and I could provide a list. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll find it, because this building shifted from one end, everything from one end shifted to the other end, and then from that end back. So, I mean, stuff got moved back and forth, and I'm very confident that we'll find it. I remember the jail, the painting that you did in that one, I remember the tree, I remember the logo, I remember those. I don't remember the etching that you're referring to, probably on Jim Cox's wall at the time. We'll find it.
Okay. With that, I have, that was the only card I had. So with that, we will move on to the library board. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Almond. The only thing that's on here is Presentation of Revision and Agendas. Any revisions?
No revisions.
Then there's nothing else on the agenda, so that's back to you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will, I have, that was the only card I had. So with that, we will move on to the library board. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Almond. The only thing that's on here is Presentation of Revision and Agendas. Any revisions?
No revisions.
Then there's nothing else on the agenda, so that's back to you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move on to the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Any revisions?
No revisions.
No revisions. Okay. So with that, we're going to beat Mr. Rothschild's record. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Agenda. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
Okay. And with the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
With that, we'll move on to the Victorville Water District Agenda. And any revisions?
No revisions.
We do work here, but this is just an exceptional agenda. We don't do anything here. Okay. With that, we will move on to the City of Victorville City Council Agenda. Any revisions to this agenda?
The only revision I have is that we do not need to go into closed session on items eight and nine. So we'll only go into closed session on nine and 10 when we get to that. The only revision is that we do not need to go into closed session on Agenda items eight and nine.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will go to the consent calendar.
We don't have a... This thing's all screwed up. How do you do it? Where did that come from? No wonder you were getting through the agenda so fast, you're ignoring me.
No, we're not ignoring you. Okay.
Mayor Protem, I need a vote from you.
Why was the only, okay. Okay. With that, we will move on to the written communications. Item number four is the Foxborough. Are we going to go ahead and pull this off the agenda, or is this, Mr. Roberts?
Staff, I think, has made a recommendation to remove this from the agenda, Madam Mayor Protem.
Would it be appropriate to discuss the item, or do we have to wait until it comes back?
Certainly, we could discuss it. It would be difficult to provide information. The Director of Municipal Utility has been held up on his flight time coming back due to the hurricane. Certainly, if you present any questions, we could take down the questions and provide the answers to you at a later date.
Okay. What we want to make sure is that this be put on the next agenda. Two weeks from now, that it be back on the agenda.
Is because I'm not going to get into the details of it, but the way the Daily Press cherry-picks a nice story and puts it out there in the headlines is totally misleading. I'm angry about it. I'm eager to talk about this issue. This is a very positive story the city's been involved with in its council. And the only way to make the story complete is to have our utilities director here. He's not, and when he is, I would hope that the Daily Press at least had the courage enough to write a true story about what was presented that day at our council meeting, because the Foxborough and the SCLA Power Generation stations are moving along nicely. There was a minor glitch. No fault of this city's, it was our experts, but we're moving along. We're hitting revenue positive inside of five years. The council had said that we needed to hit revenue positive in 10 years to deem this to be a successful project. So there's a lot to be said here on this. It's basically a $40 to $60 million initial investment, and this is actually, relatively speaking, a minor issue to the problem, but it needed, one to be needed to be addressed for sure. So when our utilities director is here, I'll chime in again and speak on this. Love to have anybody who wanted to debate with me during the council election cycle on this, because this is a prime and nice topic most cities would like to be involved with.
There's questions, I think all of us have, on this item. So as long as we make sure that it's on two weeks from tonight, the next city council agenda, we'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda tonight. Moving that, presentation on number five, Request for the MOU Agreement Between the City of Victorville and the County of San Bernardino Probation Department.
Mayor Protem, if I might just make a comment on this program. This has to do with the U-turn program. This is some funding that we, when we got the grant for $399,000, part of that funding goes towards a full-time probation officer here in Victorville, just to handle the GREAT program, which is a great opportunity, no pun on words here, is a great opportunity for us, because that GREAT officer goes out and teaches nothing but at the schools, these programs, and he covers, I can't tell you how many thousands of students they cover on training for the gang issues and all the others. So this is a great opportunity for us.
Will these officers go into the charter schools as well?
I don't know. I'll find out, though. I will. I'll let you know.
Yeah, because you find out there's more and more charter schools popping up.
There are.
And I think what we do for the other schools would be great to see the charters also involved.
Good point.
Okay. So, Mr. Gabrielles, move.
I'll second.
First and second, may we vote? Please. Item number six, Presentation to Request Adoption Resolution Number 08136, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Authorizing Access to State and Federal Summary Criminal Information and a Denial of Employment, Licensing, or Certification to Persons Convicted of a Felony or Misdemeanor Involving Moral... Okay, here I go, that word, it's me every time. ...Terpetude, and Resending Resolution Number 83-16. Questions or comments?
I'll move the item.
First and a second, may we vote? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to number seven, Presentation of Reports from the Council Members. Mr. Gabrielles?
None. Nothing for me?
Oh, come on, Mike.
No. I have no comments. She's trying to break my record. We've already gone past the time, so even if we close now, she wouldn't be...
Okay. He looks a bit clocked. Okay. With that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. This council will be going into closed session for item number...
Items 10 and 11, and if there is reportable action, we will come out and report that action. The items are fully listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, and good evening.
Okay, we have one reportable action out of closed session, and the reportable action is under...